I'm going to turn to the delegation that we had shown on the agenda for 12:00 PM, the University of Guelph students. Scott, is he? Yeah?
So, thanks, Warden Hicks and members of council. It's my pleasure today to introduce two-thirds of our University of Guelph team to you. And just a little bit of a quick recap on what they were asked to do for the county. This group is a collection of three master's students from the University of Guelph Rural Planning and Development Program. And so, they completed a study for the county on developing a climate change action plan. And they did this as part of their coursework for their masters in planning, but they did this at great benefit to the county. We've worked with student groups from both the University of Guelph and the University of Waterloo in the past, and we've estimated in the past that this type of study, had we had to go out to market for it, would cost between $25,000 and $35,000. In this case, the students did it for free, and so, we're very, very thankful for that. And we're very, very excited for council to hear the results of their study today. I should note, in terms of next steps, we are planning to bring a staff report to the committee of the whole meeting on April the 25th, which would include a link to the study itself. You'll get the overview of the study through the presentation today, but it'll be a link to the study itself, and it will also include some recommended next steps that the county take to try to work with this wonderful information that the students have provided and determine where the county wants to go in terms of showing leadership and developing a climate change action plan. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Lewis and Singh, who are here today to present the presentation today. And I'd also like to note that Alexa Ray Valente was also a big part of this project, but she couldn't be here today. So, Lewis and Singh, it's up to you.
Hi. Thanks for having us here today. We're really excited to present our report to you. It was a really interesting project to work on for us. I think it was a very positive experience overall. So, first, the purpose of this report is really to inform the planning of a climate change action plan for Gray County. And there are two main purposes that we want to address. First of all, there's mitigation, which is the reduction of Gray County's overall impact on climate change through greenhouse gas emissions. But also, we want to address adaptation, which is how to prepare for the impacts of future climate change-related events. And that could be on residents, on infrastructure, on anything really that the county has responsibility for. So, to this end, our report offers both policy recommendations, which will focus on things like the official plan and zoning bylaws, but also operational recommendations, which can be addressed in the county's day-to-day operations and service provision in order to reduce their climate change impact. In order to produce this report, we did two main things. We looked at existing climate change action plans that came from other contexts. These are both in and out of province. We have two in-province climate change action plans, which come from Waterloo region and Huron County. And so, we looked at these, and we also looked at two from outside of the province, one from British Columbia and one from Nova Scotia. And so, we put these existing four plans through a SWAT analysis to find their strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And from this analysis, we took away some recommendations that we can apply to the climate change action plan that Gray County will produce. Additionally, we conducted a jurisdictional scan by creating a survey, which was distributed to county and municipal staff. And the respondents to this survey identified both relevant operational practices that their department or municipality practices, which could be spread potentially to other departments or municipalities, but also assets that they possess, which produce greenhouse gases that could be modernized in order to produce greater efficiencies. So, now, my colleague Gerselk sing will present the out-of-province scan.
So, originally, for the out-of-province scan, it was kind of ambitious. I wanted to look at everything around the world kind of thing, see what everyone's doing in the EU, in America, South America, but came to the realization that it should be Canadian-centric because of funding opportunities, legislation, policies, and the laws. So, the first example I looked at was the County of Annapolis, Nova Scotia. To give you some context, it's located right on the edge of the Bay of Fundy, so across this water body, you can see Nova Scotia, sorry, New Brunswick. So, with their plan, they had really no choice because Nova Scotia is constantly hit by hurricanes, flooding, extreme weather patterns. You see it on the news all the time. So, they decided that we need to change something, and they did this really early on. So, the strengths of their climate change action plan is that before they got anything started, what they wanted to do essentially was collect baseline data. So, through Nova Scotia, the province, they had the province make a tax revenue agreement with the federal government to start this funding process, and then through the province, they allocated funds down to the county level. So, with the counties, they were given funds to hire consultants, environmental scientists to look at forecasting models, to see within the next 20 years, if we do not make any changes, are we going to be underwater? Are we going to be drowning? So, in the beginning process, they decided that, yes, we need to get these climate scientists in. What those scientists, they produced a report saying like, these are your most vulnerable areas if the water rises, where the flooding is going to be, potential extreme weather patterns, and how that affects your land use. So, from there, what they've done is that they've developed a plan, which is now older, and I'll get to that weakness as well, is they took the first step in educating everyone in council, in their level of government, but also the public, to make them understand that if we do not go forward with this, we're going to be underwater. So, the first step was education and awareness with the scientists conducting their analysis. So, they collected baseline data to understand where our weaknesses are and what we need to change. The second step was establishing a steering committee at the top, where they could essentially have someone oversee the entire project, but at the same time, make sure all these items are being engaged, there's public consultation, make sure there's no gaps in their pulse. The third step that they took was that they examined all municipal assets. So, they looked at the infrastructure, municipal buildings, vehicles, et cetera. And they tried to look at it at an angle, if these buildings or infrastructures are climate change-ready, what needs to be repaired immediately, what we can do over the long term. The next step that they took was that they engaged all stakeholders. So, they engaged the province, they engaged local counties around them, they engaged their public, but they also looked at utility companies, energy companies, they looked at local businesses. They tried to find out from that scientific data, who are the most vulnerable people in their community, which areas are always affected first and the last to receive any type of relief. So, from there, they went into step five, where they established a timeline. So, how long is it going to take us to do this? What are our funding options? How do we carry on and proceed? The issue with this plan was that they haven't updated it since 2013, and a law has changed, obviously, and nature doesn't wait for us to make decisions. It just decides that we, as nature, I'm going to do this, good luck, kind of thing. So, that weakness was that they haven't updated it. The other issue with this plan, and it's kind of the theme with the British Columbia, is that it really heavily depends on the province. And with the current situation on Ontario, it's not looking so good, depending on how you're going to address climate change, and if the province is willing to relinquish some funds, like what Nova Scotia and British Columbia did with their tax revenues, or increase taxes. And as you had the previous meeting, taxes are pretty contentious. So, there are opportunities in the sense that Gray County can benefit if they find a way to fund and have a scientific and evidence-based approach. So, within the county, there should be a process of collecting data, baseline data, putting it together, finding out what is more vulnerable, and then take that step-by-step approach that Nova Scotia's County of Annapolis used. And another proposition would be to establish a review period. Because this data hasn't been reviewed, and the plan hasn't been updated since 2013, Gray could benefit from a consultation period where they look at their data. So, are we meeting our targets? Is the data still the same? Are the circumstances still the same? So, British Columbia. So, British Columbia has also a unique situation. It's on the shoreline with the Pacific Ocean. So, this regional district of Central Kootenay, they are not close to the shoreline, however, they are part of a larger regional area. So, they're embedded within the Rocky Mountain, and most of their urban centers and settlement areas are in the lower valleys, where these mountains kind of connect at the bottom, where all the watercourses are. So, they have their own extreme weather pattern issues. There's always the case of drought, forest fires, but there's also flooding and runoff from when the snow melts and the rain comes in. So, the strengths in their plan was that they created a survey where they look at all their initiatives. And what their initiatives in the survey, they tried to look at the upper level and the lower level of municipalities to track the progress of broad planning actions, municipal structures, energy generation, green space, natural resource protection actions, waste management, transportation, water and climate change adaption actions. And then, the end of the report is a summary of like, how much emissions have we committed? How many emission targets have we met? And what is the difference? And what we can do to improve in the next step? Another thing that was interesting about British Columbia, and again, from the Nova Scotia example, it's very heavily dependent on the province. So, British Columbia, despite government differences and politics, they were able to come up with their own carbon tax revenue plans, and they were able to get allocated funding from the federal government. So, what they've done at the regional and lower municipal level is develop a regional watershed plan. And the idea of the plan is that any watercourses that extend past municipal boundaries, again, nature doesn't know human constraints. So, with these watercourses, you have the Fraser River Valley, you have smaller watercourses that kind of deposit into the city of Vancouver, but at the same time, you have a watercourse known as the Kootenay River. And what they did is that all adjacent regions decided to create a governance package or plan, where they would look at all the decisions around those watercourses. So, that could be development, water intake. It also pertains to stormwater management. So, if something happens upstream and there's a storm, there is an alert system for the lower areas that are going to be hit next by that runoff. So, they have all these things. The issue with this plan was, and it was kind of hard to dig through all of these other articles, is they don't have an actual climate change plan. They all follow the Clean BC 2018 policy guidelines, so the province has set the objective, but they have these smaller documents in their planning documents, their regional growth strategies, but they also have lesser initiatives within their urban centers and rural spaces that kind of form, like when you put them together, it is a climate change action plan. So, for Gray County, there could be a survey that is developed to look at, again, like what Nova Scotia did, is find your weakest areas, find your vulnerable areas, sensitive areas, put it together, and then create a survey that you could send out to the lower tier, and then at the regional level as well, where you can look at how far along have we come, what are our total emissions, what are our reduction targets. And again, it's all heavily dependent on the province, and the funding and the guidelines. But there is opportunities, and we've kind of included at the end of the report with our recommendations, which Lewis is going to talk about afterwards. But in the report, we have listed some potential funding aspects that you can get from either B corporations like Bullfrog, Steam, or some other form of climate-friendly funding, but also at the federal level.
What was the year of the BC plan?
So, the BC plan, they have recently updated it with the 2018 Clean BC Plan. So, the province of British Columbia has been very anal about keeping everything updated, looking at all the guidelines, and then collecting all these surveys that they put out through their regional districts. So, Alexa Ray, our colleague, who is not here because of work commitments, she put together this in-province scan. So, we looked at the region of Waterloo and what they have done with their plan. And regional Waterloo, in a sense, they kept everything very close to the public consultation. They wanted to keep the public informed, and they looked at public concerns. Again, they looked at where their vulnerable areas are, what are the key focus areas. So, they kind of kept it very local, that perspective, so home, workplace, transportation, agriculture, food, and waste. And they determined that the most effective strategy to get a climate change action plan, especially with your public and your constituents, is to keep them engaged with effective use of public consultation, and to determine what your stakeholders need and what their concerns are. So, when you're putting this plan together, there's no gaps. You don't end up catering to one side, and then suddenly, the other part of your region does not get anything, or your county. So, they have done smaller items up until this date. They looked at small items to upgrade, like municipal vehicles used for ride-share programs. So, they started to electrify their fleet, and then whatever is left over, they try to give it to a charity or some type of municipal service. So, those vehicles don't necessarily just get scrapped and thrown into the yard. There are some weaknesses, though, and it's essentially a very broad plan with targets, and they had a lack of cooperation with the Conservation Authority, which I think is a bit of a mistake, because the Conservation Authority helps you collect that data, it helps you manage your watercourses, your environmental features. There is opportunity, again, to create an inventory to set the baseline, and it's something, again, with Nova Scotia and British Columbia, data is very important. And the other issue was that they didn't consult their rural townships. It was kind of kept urban-centric, but they sort of ignored like the more rural-spaced areas, like the township of Wellesley and Woolwich, despite those areas providing so much with agriculture and rural industries. So, the second example was Huron County. And Huron County took a similar approach to Waterloo, where they wanted to reflect their goals based on the community's needs. And with that, they determined, again, consistent and effective public consultation and engagement. So, they examined their own municipal practices, but they wanted to ensure that their municipal staff and their practices were transferred over to their private life. They wanted their staff and the community to kind of engage in these climate-friendly practices. So, it was small items, like how do you water your lawn, naturalizing your lawn so it's better drainage. But there are, again, just like Waterloo, they did not have any professional insight, so they did not have any Conservation Authority or an in-depth technical aspect to where they're setting their targets, so it's very broad. But again, these county-level initiatives, it's very important to engage your constituents. You do not want to only change your government practices, but you want to encourage those changes in your community as well. And essentially speaking, and it's something that I've kind of noticed with all the plans, British Columbia is very keen on this, and it's making friends with your financial planning department. It's very important to understand where your funding goes. So, you don't get people coming up to you saying like, okay, so where are my taxes going? Where is the revenue being distributed? Why has this area been funded, but this area has not been funded? So, critically speaking, I think that's the most important thing. You have to manage your money. You do not want to start an initiative, but only end up going halfway because you run out of money. All right. So, that's it for the out-of-province and in-province, and I'll hand it over to Lewis.
All right. So, like I said earlier, we created a survey, which was distributed to municipal and departmental staff. And really, in this survey, I was looking for three main things. One is ongoing practices, which can be expanded. So, these are things that are being done by one department or one lower-tier municipality, let's say, that could be potentially expanded countywide in order to increase the benefits to energy efficiency for the entire county. And so, from this, I found a few practices that are currently being engaged in at several municipalities and departments, including a no-idle policy for municipal vehicles, setback timing on heating and lighting for municipal buildings, as well as even the public transit pilot project, which is something that could be explored by other municipalities. So, there's a lot of ideas already emerging from various departments and municipalities in Gray County, which if they became county policy, could be of great benefit to reducing Gray County's impact on climate change. But then, I also looked for practices which need to be improved or potentially eliminated. One such policy was the lack of telecommuting in municipal offices. Essentially, there's, one thing that I found was expressed by almost every department and municipality, was that telecommuting currently is not much of an option. So, I recommended that every municipality and department within practicality should look into creating options for telecommuting to reduce the amount of emissions that come from employees simply commuting into town for work. Another such practice was the digitization of paperwork, because there's still a lot of departments and municipalities which operate almost entirely with hard copies of paper documents for in-office work. As much as possible, this should be changed so that things that can be submitted digitally are submitted digitally, with potentially only hard copies of documents, which need to be made into hard copies for accessibility purposes or for signatures. And finally, there's a lack of intercommunity public transit, which of course is a difficult thing to address, and an expensive thing to address, but it could go a long way to decreasing the reliance on personal automobiles within the community. And then, finally, I was looking for a list of assets, which are owned by the municipalities and departments, which can be upgraded and modernized in order to reduce their impact on climate change. So, I found that the fleets of just about every municipality and department that responded are almost entirely gas-powered. So, the municipality could look into upgrading to electric vehicles wherever possible. Of course, there are certain vehicles, such as heavy vehicles for road construction and that sort of thing, which are difficult to replace with electric vehicles, given the current technology. But as new technologies emerge, that can be something that gets considered. Additionally, there are a number of municipalities and departments that express that they have heating systems, which should be updated for greater efficiency. And also, they have a lack of electric vehicle charging stations at municipal offices and departments, which could go a long way to discouraging community members and employees from upgrading their own personal vehicles to electric vehicles, since there are a lack of opportunities to charge them when they are out. So, from the in-province and out-of-province scans, as well as the survey, we came up with a list of both policy and operational recommendations. So, the policy recommendations that we formed really were informed largely by the academic literature on climate change policy, because we found that there was really a lack of policy options considered in a lot of the plans that we looked at. So, as much as possible, Gray County's planning should encourage residential infill in the settlement areas with strict density targets and heavy restrictions on residential use outside of existing settlement areas. This is because, of course, the more housing gets built outside of existing settlement areas, the more people you have who are reliant on cars in order to go about their daily lives in Gray County. And that's something that should be at least alleviated as much as possible. Additionally, the county should consider restricting residential use that is not on existing public services grids and public transit grids in order to reduce the number of people who need to drive to access these services and can't use transit. Additionally, lower-tier municipalities should consider implementing climate change policies in their official plans, if they have them. Or if they do not have official plans, they should consider adopting a climate change policy separately. And finally, planning should be, policy should be used to encourage building in walkable areas. So, this could take the form of a walkability audit that gets implemented on new areas with lots of new development, in order to determine how possible it is to live in those areas without having to use a vehicle for daily life. And this can be used to determine what incentives or disincentives should be implemented to encourage building in areas where people can get by with walking. Then, for operational recommendations, we suggested that, as much as possible, the municipalities and departments should consider electrifying their fleets. Government buildings should be retrofitted in order to make use of efficient technology. Additionally, broadband access is, of course, an issue in much of the county, preventing a lot of residents from potentially being able to telecommute or communicate with the county digitally. So, continuing to work with SWIFTs is a good option for the county in order to expand broadband access and allow more people to take advantage of digital technology in order to reduce their climate change impact. And this could also be used to encourage telecommuting, which was another recommendation. Given the amount of roads and pavement used in Gray County, we suggested that the Department of Transportation should make use of road design impact management plans in order to determine how best to design their road surfaces in order to reduce the climate change impact. And finally, the county should consider the implementation of an intercommunity public transit pilot project in order to allow people to move between settlement areas without making use of a personal vehicle. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you so much for listening. It was a pleasure to work on this report.
Thank you, gentlemen. Questions? Council McQueen?
Well, thank you very much for coming today. For me to get to Owens Sound, I have to drive an hour. So, a vehicle is certainly a necessity. But taking on your ideas, certainly, I think maybe at the county of Gray, we should have one or two spots where you can charge electric vehicles, because I don't think we do right now. Right? So, I mean, we've got to reflect what you're saying in that sense. But I always thought, in the sense of renewables, is because we have the vastness, but in a sense of creating a car like your cordless drill, we have the ability to generate power through either wind or solar on our houses or on our rural property. So, then, it's sort of like, you back your car in, you have a battery there being charged all the time, and you just change the battery, and away you go. It's always been my idea, in the sense of the cordless drill, in the sense, but you're, we have those areas, we have the space in order to do those renewables. So, in a sense of creating something that, because we need a car or points of transportation, because, you know, the Owens Sound do like to see us come once in a while. So much so, that we need to develop that technology that it's driven down, I feel, to the residential side, that we all benefit, not in the sense of the corporate side of renewables.
Certainly. Yeah, there are lots of potentials with, there's also potential with future technology that these recommendations could be updated. We were trying to address the problem as much as we could, given what's currently available.
Like I say, the shortness of the ability to have a car or a charging center is sort of. Which you're saying today.
Yes.
On top of that, Owens Sound got a grant from FCM, if you'd like to find a change to John. If you'd like, yeah. So, I guess, I don't know what your plan is to go, but there is funding from FCM as far as what you're talking about, in the sense of developing those plans, and maybe that's something we should also tie in with Owens Sound with the county of Gray. You know, because, you know, it is good, because Hurricane Hazel, I wasn't alive at the time, 1950.
Whatever. Fifty-two minutes. The other problem happening in Gray County is.
We have what they call winter.
And there's a challenge for us in the sense of a lot of things, you know, the maintenance of our roads. So, we do have some challenges here in Gray County versus, you know, the urbanization of the city. We are challenging the climate.
Of course, yeah.
Council Mill?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and as a proud Aggie and alumnus of the University of Guelph, I congratulate you on your report. I'm a little surprised, though, that there isn't something there indicating how we can more efficiently keep the beer cold. That's a good story.
Potentially in a future draft.
What's that?
In a future draft, perhaps.
Future draft, right. Good, good, good. My real question, though, was, in your last slide there, you My real question, though, was in your last slide there, you showed road design impact management, like how can you expand on that a little bit? Because I'm sure our transportation director would love to hear it.
Yeah, well, so I can't get too in-depth about that personally because I'm not an expert on the subject of road design. However, there are resources available to optimize road design and road planning in order to reduce the climate change impact, and that's by choosing appropriate services given things like temperature and traffic in order to make sure that you're using the surface with the least impact possible, given the requirements of what the road is going to have to do in order to serve the population. So I provide some resources in the full report for doing that.
Other questions? Thank you very much for taking the time to come up here, for taking the time to do this presentation and together this report, and please extend our thanks as well to your colleague, Alexa Ray.
Thank you.
We are going to blast. I apologize for that, but we need to move along. We're at 6B. Georgian Bluffs, Plan of Subdivision. I need a mover to get the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Keveney, seconded by Counselor Carlton. See, I didn't even have to look down this time. I'm getting there. Randy, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So the purpose of this report is just to provide an overview of a revised submission that we've received on a proposed plan of subdivision in the township of Georgian Bluffs, and it's known as the Davenport subdivision. So the subject lands are on the screen. They're located in the settlement area of East Linton and are located east of Gray Road One, south of Church Side Road East, west of Bomby Beach Road. The subject lands are approximately 20 hectares in size. There are residential dwellings, as you can see on the screen, to the west end, east of the subject lands, and Cobble Beach is directly north of the subject lands. So north of Church Side Road East, that's all Cobble Beach in that area. So the county received the original application back in 2018 that proposed to create a total of eight single attached lots in a future development block. You can kind of see if I can get on the screen here. So originally, the eight lots were proposed right in this area, and here's the future development block. The township of Georgian Bluffs and Cobble Beach have reached an understanding that the township would assume the private sewage treatment plant from Cobble Beach in the near future. This will allow the township to service other developments outside of Cobble Beach, including this proposed development. So originally, the eight lots were proposed on municipal water system, private septic systems. Now the proposal is that it would be fully serviced through municipal services. This allowed the applicant to actually increase the density on the proposed plan from eight lots to 20 lots within that area. So that area, again, would be, was this. So we've received a revised submission just for that. Now they've, the applicant has added some additional lands that they own to the west of the proposed subdivision. They've added these lands in as part of this proposed development, and they're proposing additional lots for a total of 29 lots now they are proposing for the, basically, the first phase of the subdivision. There will be likely future lots that will be proposed in that future development block, but at this stage, they're just looking for a draft approval of 29 lots that, again, would be on full municipal services. The proposed development also requires an amendment to the Township of Georgian Bluffs official plan, as well as an amendment to the Georgian Bluffs zoning bylaw. A number of reports have been submitted with the original application, as well as some revised reports based on the additional lands that have been included. Those are all, have been posted on the county website. The township has scheduled a public meeting for June 5th for this proposed development. So at this stage, we're just bringing this forward for information, just to let you know that we have received a revised proposal and submission, in case you receive any questions from anyone about the proposed development. And following the public meeting, we'll be bringing back a final report with a staff recommendation on the proposed development. We'd be happy to take any comments or questions at this stage.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item C, Pat, I believe you're up next, moving on to Gray Highlands. On Gray Road, sorry, yeah, on Gray Road 13, rehabilitation. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor O'Leary, seconded by Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Counselors?
Yeah, Matt.
I'm looking for, Transportation's looking for an endorsement today for an award of our Gray Road 13 project, which runs between Gray Road 4 and the Hamlet of Virginia. It's three and a half kilometers in length, all Verizon paved there with two lifts, adding 1.25-meter fully paved shoulders, and doing some work in the hamlet itself, some grinding and paving, some curb and island work. And we're going to clean it up. Right now, it's in pretty rough shape. It didn't winter well, but it's been probably close to the end of its expected service life for a number of years now, and we need to address it this year. So we had three bids on the project. Harold Sutherland Construction being the lowest, had $1,059,672.80. Along with our tender, we included a portion for Gray Highlands. They wanted to do one of the streets within the municipality, so we added that into our project and are going to include that as a separate schedule for their award. And that pretty much covers her off. We have a little bit of money left over. We're slightly under budget. And if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to...
Counselor Stiller?
I'm happy to see the paved shoulders, but it says, it says rural section, so is it?
Correct. It's within the hamlet itself, within the existing curb and gutter section. We are leaving the existing cross-section in place. In order to rip out the curb and gutter, it would have involved current storm system, brand-new storm system, and for the added width, it just wasn't economically viable.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. You stay in place. You're handling the next one as well, I believe, Matt? Okay, so we're off to Southgate. And if I could get a mover, please. Counselor Mackey and Counselor Bart Nicky.
Thank you again, Mr. Warden, counselors.
This award report is for the bridge in Holstein, Main Street in Holstein, Gray Road 109. This bridge is years old next year, 99 this year. It's been experiencing deterioration kind of at an exponential rate for the last couple of years. There was a project on Highway 6 three years ago where a lot of truck traffic from the highway detoured onto Gray Road 109, and they pretty much laid a good beating on it. It was already kind of at the end of its service life anyways. So we decided to make that one of our number-one priorities, and we put out an RFP last year to get a design in place. We had a company named Greer Galloway out of Belleville. They're a design consultant on that project, and they put together a most excellent package for us with a precast concrete structure. They considered the heritage value of the existing bridge and of the community, and we added architectural railing to the project. Unfortunately, we're going to have to close down Holstein essentially for a good four months in order to get this project complete. We have accommodated pedestrian traffic using the Holstein dam, and the detour really is only a seven-minute detour for vehicular traffic, for horse and buggy. It's probably going to take them, it would be double that likely, but it's necessary in order to accommodate the construction. We looked into different options for replacing the bridge one half at a time and trying to stage it, and it just wasn't something we could do within that confined space and with the condition of the existing structure to cut it in half and try and have cold joints with our new concrete footings, and it was just turning into a great big, something that wouldn't have worked, and the engineering consultant wasn't going to cover off and endorse it in many ways. So it would have been a safety issue at that point. So again, for this one, we went out to tender, unfortunately, or we only had one bid. I think a lot of the companies are busy right now, but I also, we feel that maybe they were a little bit worried about the proximity of neighboring residences and the tight confines of the working space. But regardless, we got a bid from South Shore Contracting of Essex County. It was within our budget. They came in at $1,499.810. Check their references. They're a newer company, but they've actually been around for quite a while. They're a former, a group of employees who are formerly with SLR Contracting, and that's somebody we've used in the past. So their core group of people is with an established bridge company that has kind of start, broken off and started their own. So what we're looking for is an endorsement of that award, and it's going to be going from July 8th to October 18th. And by the time it's said and done, I think it's going to be a great product, and it's going to serve the hamlet well for another 7,500 years.
Counselor Millen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you, Matt, for the report, and I do appreciate you and Pat and your staff coming down and meeting with the community on, was that Monday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. The butter tarts were awesome. I don't know who made them, but they were good. My question is, obviously, as you know, space is limited once you get down in tight to the bridge there. How are you going to stage materials and manage turning trucks and all that kind of thing? Because I had a concern on Saturday from the local feed mill there, they're pretty tight for space as it is. And I'm just wondering...
We, through you, Mr. Warden, we have not defined the contractor's plan for a lay-down yard yet, or exactly how he's going to go about his operation. That's something that will happen after a board, and we have a pre-construction meeting. But the coordination of the operational capabilities of doing the construction within the confines of the hamlet and to keep everything safe and to offset the electric car within the community itself will be a number-one priority, and we'll make sure that it's done right and it's done safely.
Good answer. He wrote that down.
Bonnie?
Well, I also have concerns. Will the bridge be out after or before the Maple Syrup Festival? Because I've heard, heard, heard that it's a really big event, so how's the timing going there?
We actually, to that point, have accommodated all the festivals in the area and keeping the bridge open to ensure that the economic drivers within the community and the tourists are all still coming.
You said festivals plural?
Festivals plural, there's more than one in Holstein.
If I could, Mr. Warden, I will point out to Mr. Boddy that there is, in fact, the fireworks festival on July 1st weekend.
Will here go the gando?
And the Agriplex is on the 6th of July. So they were good enough to accommodate all the festivals in Holstein, and I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Counselor Keveney?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just had a question about contingencies. I noticed in the prior report, you suggested a 10% contingency for the road and a 25% for this bridge. I just wondered if you could tell me if those are sort of the numbers you usually work with, or are you anticipating because of the age of this bridge or the fact that it's in Holstein that there could be some challenges with this particular construction?
Indeed. Most road projects are pretty straightforward. They're in limited quantities, or, excuse me, the actual items within the tender are probably half of what's in a bridge, depending on the size of the project. With bridge jobs, you never exactly know what you're going to run into subsurface until we've done investigations, we've done bore holes, we have geotechnical information. We thought it would be prudent to have a little bit larger contingency on the bridge project, just as I indicated in the report, water levels, subsurface conditions, as you alluded to, the proximity of the residences to the bridge. We just want to ensure that we have a little bit of a buffer in there in case we have to address something, in case something does happen, but we don't suspect it will. The contractor, one of the contract items was protection of structures, so the contractor is going to have the onus on himself to investigate the condition of the existing structures, to monitor the condition of the structures, and to do a police inspection, inspection of all the structures that are adjacent to the bridge. So at the end of the day, ultimately, it's his responsibility, but we just want to ensure that we don't hold this job up if something does happen, and we need to address it.
Okay. I noticed that the existing bridge is quite handsome. You mentioned a rail that will go on top, but will anything be done with the concrete to sort of maybe try to stamp it?
Yes, it's going to have, it's going to be, it's going to have an impression with the architectural texture. It's going to be very similar to the Virgin Thornberry on Hyatt. Thornberry Dam, it is very good-looking.
Harrison's good-looking, so...
You set yourself up there big time. It's too, it's too easy. Anyways, I call the question. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. I've got, are you staying? Oh, Matt's leaving. So it's Graham next for the Georgian Bluffs item. And I'm looking for a mover to put the item on the table. Moved by Counselor Clumpus, seconded by Counselor Carlton. Gotcha. Getting better. All right, Graham, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and counselors. I'm here today to review the five-year agreement that we have proposed. This is with Georgian Bluffs for two sand salt storage buildings within the township of Georgian Bluffs. They are owned by Georgian Bluffs, and we have a sharing agreement that's historically worked very well. In preparing these agreements, we consulted with staff at Georgian Bluffs, and everyone was agreed to move forward with the agreement. We share the use of the loader. It's Georgian Bluffs' loader, and we load our trucks, which is a part of our winter maintenance contract with Harold Sutherland Construction, and the insurance costs are shared, as well as the annual fee paid by Gray County. So we're looking for this to be approved and brought forward.
Very good. Seems straightforward. Are there any questions? I'll call the question, and all those in favor? Any opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Counsel, is there any other business? And any notices of motion? Do you have some other business?
Just a follow-up. In regards to the ALIS program, remember I brought that up there a while back, and I just wondered where that's at.
So I just received information from Mr. Reed, who represents ALIS. Okay, and so I have forwarded that on to the warden for his information, and I will be bringing a report likely to the first meeting in May.
Counselor Millen?
Well, I thought you were looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm just making sure there's no other, other business. Counselor Bart Nicky?
Apologies, Mr. Mill.
Not at all. Carry on.
I would like to bring a notice of motion for the next meeting to request a fulsome report on healthcare spending from Gray County, and is that enough to say right now?
We can leave it for you to work it out with the clerk.
Okay.
About what that motion will look like. Okay, any other notices of motion? No, Mr. Millen? Motion to adjourn. Do I need a second?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Mackey? Thank you. All those in favor? Suppose no one's opposed? Thank you so much.